There is second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 As opposed, ayes have it, so I will take the mayor's seat and call the meeting to order if we can. Just as I get comfortable, my guess is the mayor will arrive, which is fine. I won't get too comfortable. So I call this meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Barnes, Reed, here. Brown, Lawler, here. Spicer, here. French?
Here.
Mayor Brown, you have a quorum?
Thank you. Public comments? Anyone addressing the city council is welcome to do so at this time. They shall limit their comments to agenda items only, and no more than three minutes. Proper decorum is required. Are there any public comments at this time? Seeing none, move on to items for individual discussion. Mickey Bitner is going to talk to us about the water tower. Thanks Mickey, and welcome.
Thank you very much, Acting Mayor, Council. Thank you for this opportunity to be here. I wanted to start a little bit about why are we here right now. There, I was here last in October, and there's some new faces, and we had a really good discussion then. At that time, the council authorized us to initiate a USDA study for improvements to the water tower. The city has been, a couple of things, the MDEQ has asked that the city look into providing up to at least a million gallons of storage. The current tower is a half million gallons, five hundred thousand. And on top of that, the last tank inspection, which I believe was performed in 2014, indicated the tank needed to be painted at a cost of about five hundred and twelve thousand dollars was the estimate at that time. Through discussions with Director of Public Services, Jim Leonardson, and City Manager Mitchell, talked about some options. This goes back probably about a year ago, and they asked me what are some options for funding this? And so as that discussion went on, I said there are a couple of options. There are not very many grants that are out there for maintenance that is typically left up to the municipality, and those are, should be part of water and sewer rates. But for capital improvements, there are some options out there. Certainly for low-interest loans, there is one program that I'm aware of that is regularly available through USDA, and I brought that forward in discussions with Jim and Cheryl at the time, and said they currently, and I'm talking today, I think it was two and a half percent a couple of years ago, but they have an intermediate bond rate of two point seven five percent right now. And that's for, eligible for a loan over a forty-year term. The USDA, MDEQ also offers a program. It's probably around two and a half percent, I think, or two and three quarters, very similar, but they just offer a loan. The USDA does offer grants when the water and/or sewer rates, they have two programs. One program, water and sewer are independent of each other, but they, there are grant dollars that are eligible once a certain threshold is achieved.
Who was that you said had a program? The name that you said, aren't you saying USDA? What?
MDEQ.
Yes.
Yeah, the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality.
M D E Q.
Yep. They have the State Revolving Fund. It's called their SRF program. So, and then USDA has what they call their Rural Utilities Service. So, and that is for water and wastewater facilities. Their grant program, as I was saying, is communities are eligible once their water rates or sewer rates achieve a threshold of one and a half percent of the median household income for that particular community. And their current program, they are offering up to forty-five percent grant after you achieve that threshold. So, again, there's not many funds for maintenance. There are these programs for capital improvements, and that is something, I think, in addition to the water tower, a city's water system has had very few replacements to the system over time. I'm aware of a couple in recent, we did one on Woodlawn in Crescent probably eight years ago. The city's getting the downtown done on Superior through MDOT. That is a grant I didn't mention, but that's eligible on state routes only when MDOT is initiating the project, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe the city's getting that for ten cents on the dollar. So that is the best deal. You don't ever turn that one down because you can't beat that. So, the DEQ has been on the city for quite some time to increase the storage capacity for the water tower from a half million up to at least a million. And the most recent Water System Reliability Study that was completed for the city also contained that same recommendation of a million gallons, probably in cooperation with the MDEQ. I would say that the city should be looking at a half million to seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons, and that is based on the MDEQ has an administrative rule for a one-day demand and elevated storage of one day's use. And the city averages about one point two million gallons of water per day. So that would just tell, that's a rough rule of thumb. Should be able to store approximately that amount. That's also recommended in ten state standards, which Michigan is part of. It's a conglomerate of ten states, and I believe Ontario perhaps, that come up with the water and wastewater standards. So, that is identified in Section seven point oh point one of the ten state standards as well. So then, part of the discussion we had back in October was, do we pursue, and one thing I presented was, do we pursue one tank or two? The city has a half million gallon tank right now, just to the north of us here. And the two options that there would be, would be add another half million gallon tank, or replace it with a single one million gallon tank. And both would achieve the storage. There's pluses and minuses to both options, and would like to walk through some of those this evening. So when we look at the life cycle of a, of water towers, it is typical to look at the, look at that over a fifty-year period. So, and one other thing I'm going to jump into a little bit later here, too, is, so part of the scope was to look at the water tower and options for giving the city a healthier system with that, but also with the water distribution system. That's the network of pipes that we don't see. It's easy to be out of sight, out of mind. We forget about those. They're underground. They inconvenience us when they break and the roads closed. But there are definitely needs of the city's water system and that piping network as well. So I'm going to get into that a little bit later as well. I put in front of each of you four handouts, and you may want to pull the paper clip off there, just so we can, we'll get into them. We'll be looking at a couple of them at one time here in a little bit. But the first ones, it's labeled Handout Number One up in the right-hand corner, and it has pictures of water towers on it. And I'd just like to go through, the two options we really looked at from a financial perspective, and also from an operational perspective, would be having two five hundred thousand gallon tanks compared to a single one million gallon storage, elevated storage facility. So right now, if you look at the top of that sheet, you see, you'll recognize your tower in the upper-left corner. That's a five hundred thousand gallon tank. It's called a Toro Ellipse. And adjacent to that is a five hundred thousand gallon water spheroid tower, which you see is a pretty typical one right there. Single pedestal with the elevated tank above it. So those two are kind of going together as one option that we're presenting. And then the second option, if you look to the next, next to that, is what's called a composite tank. And it's called composite because it's, the pedestal is concrete, and the tank at the top is steel. And a lot of communities have gone this route for a couple of reasons. Some, some like the, the main thing is financially, there's less steel to paint. That's the big part of maintaining your tower is what you really need, your tower desperately needs right now, your existing tower. But then also, it kind of has, fits in really nice in a rural setting. I mean, it looks, it almost resembles, it was kind of, this design was taken off of the harvester storage tanks, if you're familiar, farms, and a lot of silos. Yeah, exactly, yeah. A lot of communities like that, and it's just a different appeal. So, so those are the two options we walked through, and we kind of looked at repainting the existing, and then building a new half million gallon tank compared to, that's option one, compared to building simply a one million gallon tank, and then decommissioning the existing tower. So as we go through here, there's some technical information there at the top on the diameter and the height. And then on the second set of numbers, we get into some costs there, and you can see for the repair and rehabilitation. So of the first tank, the city's existing tank, you can see four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. And I want to add real quick, I don't have, I don't want this to be just me, so if you have questions, please spit them out, and or just interrupt me. I won't be offended, and I would welcome that, to have a discussion. So, so about five hundred and twelve thousand, including the engineering and permitting on that one, to build a new half million gallon tank, looking at a capital cost of about one and a half million. And then we threw in some items in there for land acquisition. I believe the city has some property out in the four twenty-five area, and that is what we would probably recommend for a location. There's benefits to that. And then to do so, we'd also have to build some new transmission mains. So if there's a new tower out in that area, we'd have to build a water main to connect it to the system. And then, so you see a combined cost there of about two and a half million dollars. Then, if you look next to that, the composite tank, you can see to build a million gallon tank, you're looking at about two point two five million. Then we have some similar costs for land acquisition. The transmission main would be the same. We have to get the same water main out to the same water tower. And the engineering permitting, and for a capital cost of about two point eight million. So you see in that case, the capital cost is about three hundred thousand dollars less on the two tanks compared to the one. Now you come into the fifty-year maintenance that I was talking about earlier, and you've got the painting that's identified on here. We've got several different categories. We worked with Dixon Engineering. They have done your tank inspections. That is their primary focus, is paint and tank inspections. They are experts on that. They did your last water tank inspection, and they have some figures here you can see put together. If we combine the two towers, you're looking at about almost one point four million over a fifty-year period in maintenance costs compared to about nine seventy-five on the composite. So there, you're about, you know, four hundred thousand dollars less on the composite tank. You put the fifty-year cost together, and they're pretty similar. You can see just about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that separates the two. Then down at the bottom, there are some, we identified some advantages and disadvantages that go along, that it's tough to quantify with dollars. And I'd just like to touch on those real quick. So, the two-tower option has a lower initial construction cost. Having two tanks, having redundancy in a system enables the city to take one out of service and still function properly. One tower continues to fluctuate the water levels within it while you're doing painting on the other tower. A disadvantage is you have the longer, higher long-term maintenance costs. And if you look at financing a project, you can finance the capital costs, but the long-term maintenance costs are a hundred percent city. So that's going to be, those maintenance costs are going to be passed on to your residents. So we see that as a disadvantage. Want everyone to be aware of on that. You also need to, when you paint the tower, if you, or a con is that you need to operate the system to ensure turning water over in both tanks. And what that means is just make sure that water is not stagnant in one of them. It requires some detail in the design, but also on the operational side, to make sure water is moving in both. Because if water sits, you've, you've probably heard people talk about dead-end water mains. It can get stagnant, and that can lead to reduced water quality for the customers. Need to monitor for reserve capacities, also monitor both tank levels to ensure desired reserve capacity. On the million gallon tank, an advantage is a lower long-term cost, so the operation and maintenance. Another advantage of that, depending on the site that's, where it's located, is it might be possible to build it on the same location, but I think there would be advantages to going out in that four twenty-five area, and a couple of the advantages are, your wealth, your primary well field is out northwest of the city, where the iron removal plant is. And if you built this in the northeast part of the city, they're both up on higher ground. We like to put towers up on high ground. That way the tower is shorter to build, which is less expensive to build and then maintain. But if you have a fire anywhere in the city, you have, as the hydrant is opened up, you can draw from two sources. Your wells are pumping this way, your tower is feeding, it's draining, and while they can have multiple hydrants opening and pulling from both sources. If I'm getting too technical, just, you know, wave at me or something. But when you have your wells, and then the tower's kind of in line, anything on the, to the south, you're, you're more in a series rather than in parallel pulling. So there's advantages to having on opposite ends. The ideal location might be the southeast part of the city, because then you'd have wells in the northwest, tower in the southeast, but that is really low ground, as you know. So that'd be a really tall tower to maintain that pressure in that part. What's that?
Victory Park Hill.
Yeah, yeah. So, but then you also want to look at where a lot of your commercial industrial use is, because that's where a lot of the water demand is. And also to consider where future uses might be. Now that is not, that is not something that USDA allows their funds to go for as future growth, so that is, that is not our, our reasoning or justification for selecting that, but it is high ground. It's on the opposite end of the system. The north side of the city is up high, the south side and central is down low by the river, which is very, very typical. Everything drains to the river. So those are great spots to be able to feed your system. So that's why we, you know, initially would recommend considering the four twenty-five area. Just logically, it makes a lot of sense. Also with hydraulics running the system, as I mentioned, for fire flows, it is very beneficial to have it out in that location. So if, if a single tank was located out there in the four twenty-five, that would open up the current location. You could repurpose that. It could be any use you can imagine. Could be recreation, but it would open up an opportunity for the city property where the current tower is. Another advantage we have is if it's up in the northeast part, it could be visible from I-94. And depending where it's located, it could give the city some great exposure. We were talking earlier about some painting designs on the tower, and it would allow the city to be creative with that, and give, give the city of Albion some greater recognition for people on the interstate. A disadvantage or a con would be the higher capital cost of building a million gallon tank. So that's the, you know, almost two and a half million, or two point eight million dollars as we estimated. But again, that can be included in the USDA funding. And then when it's time to paint the tank, the system has to operate tankless during interior painting. So that's the same thing you're going to have to go through with the current tower. Jim and his staff can operate the system with wells, but it's just a, it's a little bit touchier time, because if a fire occurs, you don't have the tower to draw that extra volume. You rely entirely on your wells. You also have some backup wells that you use when the need arises. So it just puts the staff on a little higher alert for that time period while the tank is painted. Are there any questions on that information? Yes?
Customer French. Thank you. You have not considered the third choice, which is you keep the five hundred gallon at the million.
Oh, that's true.
Because if you do that, then you save, then you're only paying five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for the repair and the engineering permitting. And that gets us fifteen years until the next scheduled activity. That's a whole lot less money than, than adding a new water tower. So you add the two point eight for the million gallon, you're still going to save over the life of the next fifteen, twenty years for the existing tank. And that you could then decommission that, say, after the...
So, my understanding, are you saying repaint the existing and build a million?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So the idea, the idea is, is that you, you don't have to change infrastructure around that. You still have the two-tank solution to allow you for levels, and to take one offline for repair and maintenance over the long term. And then you're just building one big tank on the east side. And then in fifteen years, if we decide we can afford it, we can take it offline, and we don't...
Take the half million off?
Take the half million offline. So it's a short-term fix by spending half a million dollars on, on getting the half million tank up to speed, which allows us to then have active water for a long time. While we build the millions, we don't go offline, building the million dollar, the million gallon tank. It may cost us more front-end, but it gives us the flexibility we're looking for over time.
You're saying to initiate the half million gallon repaint, half million dollar repainting on its own first, to buy you some time?
Well, I'm, I'm saying, we're going to, perhaps, I mean, we have to do the cost estimations, and look at again those pros and cons about how to do this one. But by having to not build the second half million gallon, you build the one million, that still gives us all the advantages of the two-tank solution.
Yep.
But it gives us more capacity to do it. And the initial, we don't have to consider the seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars in recoding fees over fif, from fifteen to fifty years necessarily. Those could be, those could be, they happen every five years. They're a hundred and twenty or so thousand dollars until year forty-five, if we do the complete redo. Though, that a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we probably can absorb just in annual budgeting, as long as we know it's coming up.
Yep. And that would give you one and a half million gallons of storage then?
That's right.
Yep.
That's right.
So, I mean, what I, if that was, you know, we were kind of following the recommendations of the Water System Reliability Study. You know, looking at this, recommending with the DEQ and both ten-state standards, saying they should have one day's worth of storage, we'd, we'd look at one point two five million gallon storage, and we could do a single tower that does that as well. I like the concept of the redundancy from an operational standpoint. That helps out a lot. It's just higher maintenance cost. And to your, you know, to your point, if you want to stick a half million dollars in, and then decommission it in fifteen years, you could certainly do that.
Or if we grow, we get more industry in, it gives us more flexibility.
Yep.
I mean, we did well with a half a million gallon tank when we had Harvard Industries and all those jobs around, and all those plants working. There was different expectations for water amounts.
Yes, yeah.
And that's fine, but I'm just saying that that, having that extra capacity helps us plan for
The future.
Future expansion.
I agree.
And if we aren't there in fifteen years, and it's still doing well, I mean, how, when's the last time we painted our water tank, tower? It's been twenty. Last time we painted our water tank, tower?
It's been twenty-plus years.
Yeah. So this is what they recommend, but we've been pushing that string down the road for a long time. So I'm just saying that, that, that initial half million dollar expense buys us not only flexibility, but it also buys us capacity. And that might just be, you know, we spent, what, three point seven million, which we, we can take through water rate increases. We can get bonds. That's easily done. I'm just saying, just, that's a third option we've got to talk about.
Yep, that's another option, looking at the capacity. Yep. So we, when we ran this, you're absolutely right, we stuck for the recommendations from DEQ, for the city to achieve a million gallons of storage. Looked at different ways of doing that, but really one and a quarter. Or maybe you do a seven hundred and fifty thousand gallon out there and keep. But if you do that, then you're pretty much in a position where you'd have to keep the half million. So maybe you do a million.
Right. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. I want to be able to have that flex, I'm thinking, we could have that flexibility that in twenty years, we may need the capacity, but we may not.
And that's one of the questions I had, because I know that we've, I guess in the recent past, I've had discussions regarding, you know, it's an enterprise fund, so basically the, the, the usage going down. And so I know there's, there's some things happening in town. They're going to kind of, you know, have a, it's going to go kind of in a more positive direction. But when DEQ is calculating, I heard you referencing a day's worth of, of, I guess, volume of water.
One day's worth of storage.
Are they, how are they calculating that? Because, you know, if, if the population goes down, or like, how, how does that, you know, I'm trying to figure out.
That's, that's usually, can be based on a projection. You know, I think over the last census, for sure, that maybe two of the city's population has seen some decline. We typically don't project declines unless we, there's a really good reason that people are doing something to make that happen. Usually it'd be some projected increase. But I wanted to touch on a couple of things. So thirty, forty, sixty, seventy years ago, water systems were designed to provide potable water. That was the main purpose of them. Fire flow was not, it was kind of a secondary supplemental consideration. As time went on, insurance rates, and, and then also with uses, the importance of having adequate fire flow increased. And you, you know, one of your questions, whenever you get insurance, are you within five hundred feet of a hydrant? And that makes a huge difference in your premiums. Now on the flip side, we as a society have now made a shift where we're going to water fixtures that consume less water. And that, you know, your, your toilets are getting down to a gallon per flush, or point six on a lot of them. You had, you've got dishwashers that are high efficiency, dishwasher, washing machines are high efficiency, use less water. So you've probably seen a little bit of your residential usage drop a little bit. So there's, there's a desire for the fire flow protection, for having that capacity and adequate pressures and distribution mains. And some cities have had, struggled with their rates because water consumption has gone down. So the commodity portion of the water bill and sewer bill, there's less being used, so that part is going down. And so those two things are, over, over the last thirty years, are conflicting each other. The need for the importance on the fire flow and air protection, and the decrease in water consumption. And the water consumption's probably really been the last decade or so. As you've seen that, everyone's seen the HE on different detergents and appliances and so forth, so.
And so then, I guess, I don't know if, I don't know if you discussed that earlier, if we're going to get to that, because I see some numbers here, but in terms of the financing.
I was going to kind of save that for last, because I thought that's where we'd spend a lot of time, but I'm, I am welcome to do whatever you please.
Well, no, if you, if that's, we'll stick to what you have later.
Okay. Any other questions on any of the tower options, or how they were calculated or presented there?
Oh, I do have one question. So if this was, if the tower behind us was, was to be decommissioned, would that just be scrap metal? I mean, what is that, would we, is there any kind of value?
Yeah, usually that, I'm trying to think with USDA, if you could specify, that becomes property of the city. But the guys that demolish those, they build that into their price. So you'd get a lower price for demolishing it because they're planning to go scrap it. Or if you said the city gets it, then you'd probably pay more to have it demolished. You'd have to store it somewhere. You'd have to haul it somewhere. You could scrap it, and in the end, you'd probably end up paying more when you add them together. But it would definitely, whoever did that would be, certainly be interested in scrapping. Now, prices aren't what they used to be a few years ago when they were really high, but there's still value in that. A lot of, a lot of steel out there. Good question. So that handout number two, so the location that we kind of modeled in our system for the tower would be right below the text, Handout Number Two, in the upper-right corner. Somewhere in that vicinity, you see the blue dotted line, and that shows a potential location for the tower out in that four twenty-five area somewhere. Some of you may recall that probably six years ago, I think, the city was able to secure part of an EPA grant for regional wastewater facilities, and we extended sanitary sewer out there at that time, and out to HOZ trucking, and then we even, we had such good prices, we ran it down to Michigan Avenue and extended it east out to the county line. So there, and we put a lift station in, so there is facilities in place right now to, the city's really ready from a sewer side to serve that four twenty-five area. When we did that, we intentionally pursued and secured thirty-foot wide easements. And that was with the intention that someday water would be extended in the same location. So the sanitary sewer is in the center of that. You are required to have ten foot of horizontal separation between water and wastewater facilities. And so the water main, when we laid that out, the idea was it would be five foot off of an easement and ten foot away from the sanitary sewer. So it makes, getting it out there, but as far as where it's located in the end, not sure if there, if that would be on city-owned property, or if the city would have to acquire some. That's why we threw in budget number of ten thousand dollars to purchase an acre of land out there, so. But that's, that shows that they're on number two, Handout Number Two, the approximate location. So the other thing, and it's a little bit tough to see, and I was debating what size paper to print out, and I decided to keep everything eight and a half by eleven. You can kind of see some spots that are highlighted in yellow, and then more... You can kind of see some spots that are highlighted in yellow and then, more importantly, the dotted blue. And when we looked at the city's water system and we, we met with Jim as well and got some feedback from him and continued to get feedback from him and his, his operators, but we looked at two different, and I'm gonna kind of combine handout two and handout three. So handout two is a map or graphical presentation, and handout three looks at some locations that we would believe would be most beneficial and necessary to improve the, the city's water distribution system. We've got fifteen locations and some of them are contiguous, but the dotted blue on the map shows the, the primary ones that we would recommend to be improved. And there's some, you know, a couple of things, the
Irwin Avenue.
Yeah, Irwin, yeah, Irwin Avenue's on there. I referenced the ten-state standards previously in talking about water storage, and they provide guidance for water and wastewater utilities for the ten states and Ontario, and there might even be eleven states now. But they recommend a minimum size of six-inch for water main providing fire protection. The DEQ will not permit four-inch water main anymore. You're, you're allowed to have, and, and just for your knowledge, I don't know if that's on here or not, but we've got, the city has over, over a hundred thousand feet of four-inch water main in its system. So, you know, that's probably eighteen, nineteen miles of four-inch water main. Now, that isn't all bad, because if it's networked, connected to eight-inch or ten-inch, twelve-inch water main, and it's in primarily residential areas, that can be okay. So if money wasn't an object, I'd recommend you replace it all. Part of it for its age, and we also talked with Jim about locations that are prone to breaking, you may, some of those may come to mind for you, but both from an operation and maintenance perspective and also a function. So the projects that we recommended would be upgrading four-inch and six-inch mains to provide better transmission around the city, improve fire protection and specifically to eliminate bottlenecks where you have small diameter pipe connected to large diameter. And there's a few of those, there are several of those gaps in the system, and in some cases, some pretty small changes can make some big impacts, and other ones, there's some sizable changes on there. So I won't go through each one of these, but you see, we've got them listed, there's fifteen, and, you know, four of them are Irwin Avenue, and that's just because the water main sizes differ in each one of those segments. So, but we came up with about three-point-two, three-point-three million dollars of water main improvements. And there's some projects with assumptions there, and you can read through those, I won't go into those unless you have questions on them. But then we also had, when we did our initial run-through, we had the other areas highlighted in yellow that you see on the map. I don't have a, a printout of those, but that's about twenty thousand feet. What you see right here is about eighteen thousand feet, eighteen thousand six hundred feet to the tune of about three-point-two, three-point-three million dollars. The yellow is about twenty thousand feet, and that's probably about three-and-a-half million dollars right there. So, and that would really be a
A million a mile.
Andy, I didn't run the numbers that close, but
It's about a million.
I'll trust you on that.
Eighteen thousand, if it's eighteen thousand feet for three-point-two and there's five thousand
Oh, there you go, yeah, yeah.
A mile.
About a million a mile, yep.
About a million.
Ballpark, yep, yep. So, so there's some, there's some food for thought. So now, one of the questions, any questions on the water main that we have listed there that's shown on the map? Anything at this time?
So, for example, I don't know how well you know the, do you know the streets fairly well?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So Austin Ave, where it kind of, where it crosses Eaton?
Yep.
Mr. Pierce, so what, what is it, what's the ideal, the idea there?
It's right now a four-inch pipe.
Which one, you said?
It's the diagonal.
You said Austin?
Yeah, it's the diagonal.
It's, it's in between the eleven and ten, number eleven and ten.
Yep. Let's see, there's more. It's four-inch right now, we had planned on eight-inch water main in that location.
So the idea, so I'm basically repeating what I'm hearing, so what you're saying is we're trying to put in the larger pipes, so at least the areas that have the smaller pipe are connected to?
Yeah, something larger, correct, yeah. So I didn't explain that real well, sorry about that. So if you have a, if you have an overall network and you've got some larger pipe around the perimeter, and you're connected with four-inch and six-inch pipe on the inside, four-inch, again, we would not put that in new, it would not be permitted by the DEQ for municipal systems, that is not allowed. But if there's not a history of breaks, and it's primarily a residential area, as long as we can provide, as long as we can show we can provide adequate fire protection, I'm okay with that. I would say put that on your list on when you have money for it to replace it and upgrade, replace the services as well. But the ones that make a big impact here, fire flows, are the ones that we want to address and we want to connect, finish some of those larger, to your point, the exterior loops, and I, I say exterior, so you can have, maybe it's four blocks by three blocks of a eight-inch pipe, and maybe a six-inch down the middle, and then maybe you've got some four-inches running off of that. If that, if we can model it and it provides adequate fire flow and your residents don't have water quality issues, I'm okay with that, as long as it's not a maintenance, you know, and if, if Jim or his guys say, hey, we've had three breaks in the last four years, then it comes to the priority, and it goes to the front of the line, we want to replace it for ma, not because of fire flow, but because of maintenance. And if we're gonna replace it for maintenance, let's do it right. So, did that answer your question?
Yeah, yes.
Any other questions on the primary or secondary list of water main replacements?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Law.
Thank you, Mayor. So this preliminary estimate for the water main and for the water towers are like two separate deals?
Well, what, what we would recommend is combining them into a single project through USDA. So, which is what I'm gonna get into here in just a second, how to, how to finance this. So, so one of the questions that we had back in October when I was here is how do we finance this? And that was part of what we were directed to do at the time, was to pursue the funding, the scoping of the project and then funding through USDA Rural Development. USDA Rural Development has a rural utility service program, and they offer low-interest loans to communities for water and wastewater improvements. And the current rates, I mentioned earlier, I'll repeat that, for the current intermediate rate, which is what the City of Elbion would qualify for, is two-point-seven-five percent. Those change quarterly, so we, we don't know what the next one's gonna be until, now we're through June thirty, so probably the end of June, we would find out what the next quarter's gonna be. But those adjust, they also offer a market rate of three-point-three-seven-five percent, but this, based on the, the median household income, the city would qualify for the intermediate rate. They also offer a poverty rate, but you have to also have a consent order, you know, from the DEQ in order to achieve that, so, you know, you can think about Flint or something of that nature, where they would qualify. So the financing, so their program, first place we always want to look is the free pot of money, right, the grants, that's always the first place we look. And there are not any standing program that offers grants for this. There are some unique ones that come out once in a while. We've used MEDC for a lot of infrastructure projects in the past here in the city. I mentioned the M dot one earlier, that's a unique animal because it has to be on a state route where there's water main within the influence of the pavement, and the DOT will cover that, between the federal and state, and the city pays ten cents on the dollar. Not gonna beat that one, ninety percent grant. There are some, like I mentioned, MEDC, but it's on a project-by-project basis, it's competitive, and there's usually maxes on it, half-million, million, and they often are not interested in funding maintenance, like the painting of the tower, they would say, that's your responsibility. If it's capital improvements, achieving better fire flow to serve your customers, that would be an eligible type of scope. So with this program, as I mentioned, the DEQ also offers a program with a similar interest rate, but there's a strictly loan. USDA does offer up to forty-five percent grant, but it's based on your, your rates have to achieve one-point-five percent of the median household income. And the one-point-five percent is the annual amount. So USDA requires the use of the most recent census, which in two thousand and ten for Elbion, it was twenty-seven thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Twenty-seven thousand six hundred and fourteen. And one-and-a-half percent of that is four hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-one cents. So on an annual basis, right now, I believe the rates run right around two hundred and forty-one dollars a year ballpark for a typical residential customer. So that's a pretty big gap to fill in. Now, if, if the capital project was large enough, and this is one number I don't have right now, is how big that number would have to be for the city here, but once you get beyond that, then that's when the grant dollars come in. The grant dollars are spent last, the loan dollars are first, the grant dollars are last. We recently had a project, did a study like this for the village of Lawton over in Van Buren County, and they were in a similar situation to you, their rates weren't quite as low, but they were low and they did not want to raise them, but then, as we got into the numbers, they saw what they needed, and they found the point where the grant dollars kicked in, and they said, okay, instead of doing a one-point-two-million-dollar project, we can do a two-point-four-million-dollar project for the exact same cost. There was something of, it was something like that, or two, two-million dollars, because once they hit that threshold, the work after that was all gonna, all be grant. So it was kind of a no-brainer at that point. So when we do the, the USDA, so part of what we wanted to do, and I, my initial desire when I came here was to get some direction on the tower, if the city wanted to pursue a single tower or two towers, I know it's a lot of information to digest, and I'm not expecting that this evening, but you can certainly digest that and forward questions to me. But that was my initial goal, was to get some direction on that, what to pursue for the tower as well as the water main. And then our plan for USDA, there are three components that we had identified, we were directed in October to proceed with. I just brought examples of ones we recently did. This happens to be in, for the village of Cassopolis down in Cass County, but there's a, we have to do a preliminary engineering report that is, is pretty much technical and a lot of numbers in it that pertain to the scope, looks at options that we considered. So to your point, Andy, looking at different options, the do-nothing option is always one, and then some other options for making improvements. We run through the rates and we show what the community residents would have to pay if it was, if a hundred percent of the project was financed, or if the USDA were to offer some grant monies as well. So that's all contained in the engineering report, or preliminary engineering report. USDA calls it the PER. The second component is a environmental review, and the environmental review is, because these are federal funds, we have to look at endangered species, navigable waters, State Historic Preservation Office, or SHPO, you've heard that probably before, we have to get clearance from all the different entities that are required on the, for any federal funds being spent. And that takes the most time because we send letters out and we have to wait to hear back from other agencies. So that really is the controlling item. Once we have clear direction on where the community wants to go, it's probably about, three months is about as quick as we can turn them around, 'cause we get letters out right away to the different agencies, we have to wait for them to hear back from them, address questions if there are any, and then finalize the environmental report. Or environmental review is what USDA calls it. The third component of USDA application, so those two are standalone documents, is the application, and there is about an eight-page application, but then there's about
Sixty pages.
Eighty to a hundred pages of supporting documentation that has to go with it. So you have to provide draft contracts for, between the city and the local attorney, between the city and bond counsel, for the engineering services, for a financial advisor. You have to have all those completed in draft format, and USDA will review those and determine whether those are acceptable or not. Once that is submitted, USDA will review them, usually takes them about thirty days or so. If we're in communication with them along the way, it can be a little bit quicker, and they will send out what's called a letter of conditions. They will send you an offer letter with a low-interest loan rate, and it may or may not include grant. I think in your case, based on our experience, if, if the project achieved that threshold, it would include grant dollars as well. At this point, you are still not obligated to proceed, but when you get that, then you need to make the determination if you want to proceed with the project and secure the funding. They will offer an interest rate, but it will depend on when you actually close on the loan. They'll offer, once you acknowledge, they'll offer a rate, and I think they'll honor that. If the rate goes down, you get the lower rate, if the rate goes up, I think they'll keep the rate that you were offered. And then it is a forty-year payback on that, so for water and sewer, so it's a forty-year note, and that's paid back over time through user rates, and they will prescribe and enforce that you keep your rates in a spot that keeps up with the cost of payback and also for other operation and maintenance on your system.
So, I guess, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, and just on that, I was just gonna add, if you look at, if you look at handout number four, I, I provided something like this to Jim and Cheryl and Tom Mead last fall, and it was based on two thousand and nine information. The city manager in Plainwell undertook this initiative himself, 'cause he wanted to show his council where their rates were, and he shared this with me, and he, they just updated it in March, and so I was glad to see that, but I, I, I plopped the city on here and highlighted it just so you could see it. In the middle, somewhere around that twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six range, you will see a double underscore, and that's just where the average is. That's the only thing that is showing right there. So the first column shows water rates, the second column is sewer, and then the third is the combined. And then it shows at the bottom, it's based on the average monthly usage of six thousand gallons for water and sewer on either a three-quarter inch or five-eighth inch metered residential customer. So your rates have been at the, you see right there, are very low for both water and sewer. And I think, you know, if we, if we look at what the city has done with its water system historically, I think the last, I mentioned Woodlawn Crescent, that was a pretty small water project, a couple of blocks of water main replacement. Prior to that, the iron removal plant was built, the new wells, I think that was ninety-four? Ninety-two, ninety-four?
Oh, no, it was two thousand, two thousand and one.
Right. Oh, and I think there might have been some
Iron removal plant.
Okay, so that was two thousand and one, so I think that was the last major capital project, I mean, significant one that the city undertook for the water system. You know, and I, I would say a lot of the communities where we work, there's probably a water project almost every year, or maybe every other year, to make it a little bit bigger and get more bang for your buck with the economy of scale, to replace some of the old deteriorated main. So historically, I think that the, the city has not been very proactive on the water main in that regard, but it's also offered very low rates to the customers in exchange for that. I think that's been great, looking backwards, looking forward, it, it increases the need, you know, into the future. You had a couple of questions?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just gonna ask a couple of questions real quick. And so, so with the USDA grant, basically, there's the, there's the forty-five percent of the project that they will cover, correct?
Once your, once your residential rates meet one-and-a-half percent of the median household income.
Okay.
So, let's, and I wish I had these numbers with me, and I, as I was driving here, I, I kind of bet myself we'd have more discussion on this than anything about the towers, which was my, you know, as an engineer, I'm thinking of the technical aspects of a water tower and how it serves the system, and I'd be more focused on that, and then as I got here, I thought, you know, it's gonna probably be more about the dollars and cents. But let's just say, for example, we found out that by increasing the rates from an average residential customer from two hundred and forty-one dollars a year up to four fourteen, it's four fourteen twenty-one, that's one-and-a-half it's four fourteen twenty one, um, that's one and a half percent of the median household income. Let's say if we got your O and M budget in line and the, the debt retirement that we applied from the rates would allow the city to borrow at forty years, let's say it was three million dollars. Well, then that first, if you did a three million dollar project, it would be all loan. And if that was the threshold, um, I would be a very strong advocate and I would be very slow to take no for an answer of increasing that project cost because the, the amounts above that would be grant. And I would, um, if it didn't resonate, I would spend as much time as I needed because that's where we wanna do is get, take advantage of those grant dollars if they're there. But let's, I have, I have to do a quick, uh, quick math here, but if I had, let's say three million dollars was all, um, what the city could finance, if that's fifty five percent of my project cost, that would allow a five point four five million dollar project of which the two point four five would be grant. So, and I don't know if that threshold for the city is three million or five million, so just please don't let that number burn itself in your brain by throwing something out there. Let's say it is the three million, um, the next two and a half million dollars would be grant. So I would say, well, let's pick out enough water main to scale our project and take advantage of that. If there was a, if there was a, um, larger appetite, then it would continue to be a forty five percent grant loan split beyond that.
So, so I guess, I guess my question is, so you, you start with, you start with the cost of everything, this is the project, the overall cost. And then we say, okay, well, in order for us to be eligible for the USDA forty five percent, we have to make sure that, um, residents are paying one percent of the median.
One point five percent of the median household income.
Okay, so then that, that number is set, that's a certain amount of money, correct? Um, so then what, if, and that's, and that's being used to pay back the loan?
Yep.
Okay. If we say, you know, like you said, let's go with the five million dollar number. Does that adjust the, the length of the loan if, because, you know, the, the, the amount that we're paying every year based on that median, is it, and that's another question, is it set for the median when the project starts?
Yep, yes, sir.
So you, so that, that, that amount of money is set?
Yep, so a, a couple of things I can see just from looking at where your rates are and I, I looked at your budgets or audits, um, in, um, review, I don't have any notes on them. But part of it would be restructuring your budget to include more for capital improvements. Um, I would say that your water rates and what you're investing in your system is not where it should be. So, and that would be to our advantage with USDA. Um, that keeps more of the money for local improvements and it shrinks the gap of what we could use for debt retirement. So right now, your gap, a typical customer pays two hundred and forty dollars and eighty four cents a year. And we'd have to get to four hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty one cents per year. That's a fourteen dollar and forty five cent per month increase, if you wanna look at it that way. I haven't ran through the numbers yet, but I'm just guessing that we'd probably say about five dollars a month should probably be built in just to where your system to operate it on a normal basis. And that might leave, um, nine dollars and forty five cents available for debt retirement. We will actually try to stretch that, um, budget as much as we can. And which we typically do and the USDA will often tell us that, hey, you're, you've made it too much, you're, you're getting unreasonable here with your capital improvements fund. Because what that does is it, it increases the amount of grant and decreases, uh, makes it more favorable for the municipality.
How, oh, I got, I have one more question. How many, um, at the, I guess the four fifteen rate proposed increase, how many, how many, um, households are using water?
How many are what?
This is, this is a question for, the, the number of households who are, that are using water?
How many water customers?
Yeah. Single hall.
I wanna say
So, and, and one thing, I know you can have different rate structures for commercial, industrial as well. And that's something that as we dive into the report, we will need to get from Tom, the number of commercial users and industrial and residential. And we're gonna, working with Tom and, and Cheryl and Jim on this, we're gonna have to be able to show pretty, pretty accurately that the revenue you're receiving lines up with the number of customers and the billings. Um, and what you're charging and what you're, what you're receiving. So, and typically, we find some gaps when we do that in communities. Um, we may find some people who are paying very little and some, you know, and we may find out, lead to find out that there's a broken meter somewhere. Or somehow fifteen, twenty years ago, someone's, someone got locked in at a different rate or some billing, uh, clerical error or something of that nature. So there'll be, there'll probably be some things that don't make sense. And that's a good thing because that's a way to capture more revenue without making any changes at all. If you find some customers who are paying little to no water or sewer, um, everybody should be paying water and sewer and that's a way to, um, help to fund out without increasing anything to anybody else.
Councilor French.
What's the fund balance in the water plant?
As I recall, it's at least a million.
Yes, I just had Tom pull the, um, balance sheet today and it was reflecting one point two million.
That's what I thought. So we have some resources we can bring to bear in this project if we needed to.
So that will come into play with the USDA as well. If you're sitting on a lot of cash, that will also reduce the, um, can impact how much grant dollars you're eligible for.
So is, okay, Councilor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just for clarification, um, for myself and anyone else that may be watching. Uh, Mayor, can you, um, kinda break down what this, uh, four fourteen twenty one is and the two forty one a year and the one point five of the median household income? Can you explain more in depth what that, what that means?
Sure.
Um, well, that, well.
I'm happy to, sure. So USDA, so they have, um, you could probably borrow just on loan almost any amount that you wanted. Most communities can do that. Uh, however, to be eligible for the grant, what they're, what they, what they determined is that a typical person should be able to pay one point five percent of their income, the, the median, the middle income, um, for a water utility and for a sewer utility. So we've worked with some communities that have pursued both and both the water and the sewer then in that case would have to be each of them at one and a half percent because those are two independent funds. So USDA says, okay, you want some grant dollars? Um, we're not gonna give you a grant if you are undercharging your customers. And they define an adequate charge as one and a half percent of the median household income. So communities that have a median household income of fifty thousand dollars, their customers must be paying, uh, to, an average residential customer, one and a half percent of that is gonna be seven hundred and fifty dollars per year. You can divide that by twelve to get a monthly rate or divide it by four to get a quarterly rate if, um, like the city, I believe the city works on a quarterly billing basis. So, yeah, I should have explained that earlier. So USDA has determined, uh, one and a half percent is what a customer, uh, should pay. You know, to me, that seems a little bit high, um, but that's what it's been for decades and decades and I don't think they're gonna change that anytime soon. So in Albion's case, based on the two thousand ten census data, the median household income in Albion is, uh, twenty seven thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars. So if I take one and a half percent of that amount, it will result in four hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty one cents. And that's on an annual basis. So if I take the four fourteen point two one and, um, you can divide it by four, divide it by twelve for a monthly, I didn't, uh, I don't think I went into that at all. But, um, if I look at the typical customer in Albion, um, the, and you can see on this sheet, I think it's, it's shown as nineteen dollars and forty cents and this is equated to a monthly amount. I found an email from Tom this afternoon that had some rates on it and it might actually be twenty dollars and seven cents. Which would move it up, uh, you know, a couple of spots on the water side. But it's right in that twenty dollar a month range. So the gap between the typical city resident of two hundred and forty dollars and eighty four cents. Quarterly amount.
No, it's a hundred per quarter. Right, it's four fourteen divided by twelve.
Oh, yes, 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 for the one and a half percent. I thought you meant the current rate. Okay, I gotcha, yeah, yeah.
So it's about thirty five dollars, thirty four dollars, thirty five dollars a month and we're paying twenty.
Yep.
So that's a.
It's a big gap.
That's a, almost a seventy five, eighty percent increase.
Yep. Yep, that's a.
And it's, and I would also add that one reason why we probably haven't adjusted our rates is that that one and a half percent is based on an average median income, which means for half of our customers, they're paying more.
Yep.
Because they make less.
Correct.
So as we try to keep our defaults down and try to keep people with water and, uh, keep the rates low. So it, it, it sort of puts us in a bit of a bind.
Exactly right.
I think, I think the other question I have, so if, if, um, the, uh, the two forty one that we're currently bringing in annually, so basically it jumped, let's say it potentially jumps up to four fifteen, like what, what percentage of that four, that four fifteen is available to us to start paying back? I guess what I, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to wrap my mind around is, is you can have a, let's say you have a five million dollar project, if we, I'm just throwing that number out, if we did all of the, uh, main replacements and we did, let's say, you know, Andy did, we said we, we redo this and build a, a million dollar amount, a million dollar tower in the four twenty five. So you have five million dollars, so the USDA is going to pay, once we, we say, okay, we're gonna, increase the rates to one point five percent, that jumps up. So then the USDA is gonna say, okay, you're now eligible for us to give you forty five percent of that five million dollar project. Okay, is that, is that correct so far?
You're, you're close. Um, they would say, so we run through all those financials in our preliminary engineering report. That'd be based on the project cost. And just, just for what it's worth, I think if we did the, um, the tower option and the water, if we did all the water main that we recommended, it's by around nine and a half million dollars, something like that. Let's say that difference between four fourteen a year and two forty a year, we, we build the city's rate structure to provide a little bit more for capital improvements, but then the bulk of that is gonna be available for debt retirement, for paying back this loan to USDA. And it's kinda like saying, um, it's kinda like going to a car dealer and saying, I've got four hundred dollars a month for a car payment, what can I get? And they would say, okay, we can get you a sixteen thousand dollar vehicle at this percent for four years, five years, six years. Well, it's kinda the same thing with your water system. If we add up with all the number, all the customers, commercial, uh, residential, industrial, and we say, okay, we can afford, uh, two hundred thousand dollars a year for debt retirement. We can back calculate and we can say, okay, that, that'll get us for a forty year term, we can afford a three point one five million dollar project. That first three point one five million is gonna be one hundred percent loan. If you came to me and said, Mickey, we, that's our threshold, we wanna stop right there, I will kick and scream up here in front of you and say, go more, because beyond that would be grant. So in my example earlier, let's say it was three million dollars. You can afford to finance at two hundred thousand dollars a year, three million dollars. USDA is gonna say, that first three million is your baby. You own it all for two hundred thousand dollars. And that's what it takes, when you raise your rates, you can afford to pay back that amount. Once you go beyond that, the USDA will finance up to forty five percent of your total project.
And, and that's, and I think that's where I'm trying to figure out what, what's filling in.
Yep, so in my example, if you did a three, my first example, if you did a three million dollar project, it would be one hundred percent loan, no grant. If you did a three point five million dollar project, it would be three million dollar loan, half million dollar grant. If you did a four million dollar project, it would be a three million dollar loan, one million dollar grant. And that's where I'm saying, once we determine that threshold, up to five point four five million, because at five point four five million, forty five percent of that is two point four five, fifty five percent, the city's portion, uh, would be three million dollars or your loan. Cause the grant dollars are always spent last with USDA. So, did, did, did I explain that any better or I, I know it's.
I'm gonna provide a slightly different way to spin that. So what we're being asked is if we buy the water tower project, that's what we tell USDA is our project. It then gives us an additional forty five percent to do the water main project for free because it's a grant, up to forty five percent of the original three million dollar project for the water tower.
And I'm gonna reinforce, don't quote me, that three million is the threshold, but if theoretically.
But that's what we're saying.
Yep, if that's the threshold, that's what I'm saying, so.
So is the threshold being determined by?
Your median household income.
Well, yeah.
And number of, number of customers, it'll be a financial analysis on your water system, um, enterprise fund. Looking at number of customers, what you charge your commercial customers and what you charge your residential, industrial, number of customers of each, and we'll do the math and there will be a gap and we'll have to work with Tom to figure out where that gap is. Then we're gonna get it where it's pretty close, it won't be exact, but it'll be pretty close. And we're gonna say, okay, this is what your budget currently is. Your budget really should be, you should be putting more in for capital improvements because you should be tackling some projects. But then if we go up to that four fourteen a year, this much of it, you can be used, it's kinda like looking at your total paycheck. I gotta pay my car, I gotta pay my water, sewer, I got this much left for my mortgage or this much left for rent or this much left for dining out or this much left for a vacation fund. And we're gonna say that much, how much can we borrow if we can afford to pay whatever that adds up to? Hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand a year, maybe it's three hundred thousand a year, maybe it's four million dollars. If it's four million dollars, we'd say, okay, if you have the appetite for that, then let's go up to at least probably seven. I haven't done the math on that, but we wanna make sure that we get that.
But, but I guess my question is, when we're doing that, the amount of money we get, let's say everything stays the same in terms of, um, customers, in terms of median income. There's only so much money we're bringing in every year.
Yep.
Okay, and so then once you all do the calculation, that, that, that assessment, you say, okay, this is the threshold. But if we kept increasing the cost, they're only paying, cause at a certain point, they're only gonna, it stops at forty five percent, right?
Correct.
So then, that's why I was saying earlier.
So, so your rates could go higher. Let's say in my example, and I, I hate to keep using this because this is what's gonna be burned in everyone's brains and it's gonna come back and burn me later. But let's say it, the three million dollar example is what the city can afford by, uh, just back calculating the available cash. Five point four five million gives you a forty five percent grant, you're paying a three million dollar loan. Let's say you said, we need to do ten million dollars of improvements. Okay, well then, your loan would be five and a half million, assuming the, this goes through with USDA. The grant portion would be four and a half, four and a half million. If one and a half percent allows you to finance, one and a half percent of your median household income allows you to finance three million dollars, you still have to pay that other two and a half. So you're gonna have to go up to probably one point seven five or one point six. So you could do more, and I, I mean, I could tell you, you could, your water system could probably use thirty million dollars or the work at the blink of a. And I, I mean, I could tell you, you could, your water system could probably use thirty million dollars or the work at the blink of a nigh, I mean, that wouldn't be a problem if money was no object. There is definitely need in the system. But I also understand, we, we have to live in, in reality, so, um, we all have, we all have budgets, so. Does, does that help explain that a little better on how, um, and I. In hindsight, I wish I had come with knowing that number, but I haven't gotten the whole customer breakdown with Tom yet, and that'll be the next thing on my list to come back and find out, you know, and that. That number could be seven million dollars, cause there's quite a gap right here.
But, I, I guess, I guess, I guess the heart of my question is basically that. It's gonna have to be, um, varying at the same rate, basically, so like if, if we. If we have, if we have the, if we have the one point five rate, and you do that calculation. There's, we can't go out and get like a, like a, well, we could, but ten million, million dollar project, but the only way to close that gap is to raise the rate. There's no other way to.
Well, I think part of your rate, though, when we're done, is gonna be increasing the portion that goes to your capital improvements, so that you will be able to. Not only will you have enough for your debt, but a larger portion of your rate than what you have right now will go toward capital improvements. So in addition, you do one large project, but then you start doing a project every year, every other year. And especially when you compound it with, uh, street improvements. You know, you can kinda kill two birds with one stone when you're doing it that way, so you will be able to accumulate additional funds. I am not saying that your rate will be stuck there for forty years, so please do not misinterpret that, I'm saying that's when the. When you close on the loan, just before that, there would be a rate ordinance that would come before city council that would need to be adopted. Um, but then going forward, you would wanna look at your rate on a regular, on an annual basis. Um, I can tell you that, I know it's a very challenging topic, and I've talked to many communities, and I've sat in many council meetings when it's debated, and it's, it's always hard to raise rates. So what ends up happening is a lot of communities won't touch them for four or five years, because it's not fun to talk about. Then, when it's time to raise rates, we have to do fifteen, twenty percent, because we haven't done anything for a while. And that's not fun either. Even though a lot of times. I'll never forget, uh, that was probably nineteen, twenty years ago, but I was in Decatur, Michigan. They were charging four dollars a month for their sewer bill, and they had left it there, they're actually subsidizing it from the general fund. Um, which is not a good idea. They raised the rate to five dollars a month, and the headline was, Village Raises Rates Twenty-Five Percent. Which sounds crazy, but they raised it a dollar a month, and, uh, even then, you know, not a. If you put it in that sense, it's not a significant amount, so when you wait, um, the raises, they are larger and more painful. A lot of communities have gone to adopting the ordinance that, uh, references the, um, consumer price index for utilities. There is a CPI that's just for utilities, you adopt that, you say, our rates adjust annually with that. Off the table, goes up, you know, one and a half to four percent a year, it just automatically happens at a certain time. And that, that way it keeps up. Um, some communities really like that, some have chosen not to, but that is an option that, um. Takes away a, a, a tough topic on a recurring basis.
Are there, are there questions?
Anybody getting glossy-eyed yet?
Councilor French.
Thank you, Mayor, um, so I guess the next question is what's next, you're gonna get some numbers. This is perhaps a question for Jim or, or for, um, city manager, the idea of, um, are we hoping to have a decision about this? In the next month, the next two months, quarter, what's the, what's the goal?
Great question, so timeline is one of the last things I wanted to address on here and I.
I'm great at segueing.
You are, that was perfect, that was perfect, so, um, in order to proceed with these documents, as I mentioned, one is the environmental review. That takes about three months, and we need to know the scope of the project in order to do that. Because we have to get shippo clearance and endangered species and other habitat at each project location. So if we're building a new tower, we need to have photos and, and do an assessment of that location. If we're replacing water main, we need to identify all of those on our application to shippo, uh, state historic preservation office. Um, and also assess them for, um, having endangered species review and, and so forth. We have to know the locations, so we're in a little bit of a holding pattern, we've done, we've done a lot of background legwork. I think if we did a little bit more, it might, on the rates, it might help, um, help you to make a, a, a better informed decision. But we got about three months to complete the environmental review, the engineering report, once we know what the scope is, we're probably thirty to sixty days. Those things occur concurrently, the, the real lead time is the environmental review, that's what takes the most time, so. And we won't hear back from USDA until thirty to forty-five days after we submit those along with the application. So the engineering report would get submitted, the environmental review, and then a draft, or the application would come before council for approval and submittal. And there'd be some work with your attorney, uh, your attorney would have to prepare or review, we would prepare all the draft contracts, the attorney would have to review them. And sign off on the draft contracts as well.
So the, the question I have, you got, you referenced that a little bit earlier in the discussion about, when, if, if. I'm sure we're gonna have to make, we're gonna have to make a decision, but, um, if we said, okay. Let's hold off, what, what's the latest point that we can make that decision?
Two hundred years from now, I mean.
Well, I know, I'm, I'm saying within, within, you know.
Never, I mean, I, um.
What I'm saying is, if, if, if we're like, we, cause what, what happened is, the, the community recently had a, uh, single hauler.
Yep.
Uh, ordinance, we did that, and that actually kinda cut rates. Um, and so, but there was some, uh, concern about that from, you know, some sectors in the community, um, for other reasons. And one of the things we said was that, well, we had to go forward, cause we'd already officially made a, taken a, taken a stance on wanting to go that, that route. So before something like that happened, where we were kinda binding ourselves.
Yep.
I wanted to make sure, like, when, when is the.
The drop dead?
Yeah.
Well, the USDA is an ongoing program. Um, they have changed their grant amounts over time. Back in the late nineties into the early two thousands, they were doing seventy-five percent grant. And we did a couple of, uh, water and sewer systems for seventy-five percent grant, which was a great, great deal, but. Those residents were also still paying one and a half percent of median household income, so it was a big, uh, um, it was a new water and sewer system, so it was a, a, a big jump for them. But turned out very well, then the USDA went through a period when, when dollars froze up and there was no grant dollars at all. And then probably three, probably four or five years ago, they came back with forty-five percent. So that can change up or down, um, it, it, it went from seventy-five to zero. So it's not like five percent increments or anything, and, and then it can go, uh, went from zero to forty-five. And part of it depends on the demand for projects, if they have a big demand, they may cut out the grant funds. Make their budget go far, farther, when there's, um, there's probably many other political factors that I'm not even aware of that play into that, but, uh, you can use your imagination on those. So. And then the interest rates vary quarterly, and we don't know on that what's gonna happen with interest rates, they were the lowest. Someone checked rates back to nineteen seventy-three, we just had a closing on December twenty-third or fourth for one point eight seven five percent. That was the lowest rates, uh, person at the USDA has ever seen, they checked rates back to seventy-two, they never saw rates that low. We saw that in the fourth quarter and we jammed to finish to get the closing done, because on, uh, January first, they were changing to two point five percent. So, um, and if that happens, you know, if it's a, if we think we got a great rig, we can try and push things through. So let me continue forward on the schedule here a little bit, so. Let's say you said tonight, Mickey, here's what we wanna pursue, here's our scope, let's do this on the tower, go after this water main. I leave back here, leave here, go get with the team, and we plug forward, three months from now, we submit this to USDA. Um, thirty days later, they provide, um, a letter of conditions, which is an offer, and outlines their conditions. Um, you decide, uh, you wanna proceed, and you're still not, um, a hundred percent committed at that point, but you submit, um. Have all your contracts that are executed, um, and we start designing it, we've probably got. Four to five months of design time, probably a couple of months of permitting, um, especially with a tower, we have to get, uh, FAA. Approval on that as well, because of the height of the tower. Once we have the permit secured, then and only then will USDA allow us to advertise for construction bids. They require a minimum of thirty days of advertising, we do that, we open bids. They typically say to allow night, up to ninety days for closing after the bid opening. The one I referenced last quarter, we opened bids December first, because rates were great, we got all the players involved to have a closing on December twenty-third or twenty-fourth. I think it was twenty-fourth, I think we had Christmas Eve closing, um, but we have to get bond counsel and local attorney and USDA. Everybody has to be there for it, so it's, uh, takes coordinating schedules, but let's say it's sixty days is probably, sixty to seventy days is pretty typical for a closing. At the loan closing, you sign your construction contracts, and then, um, typically, we have the pre-construction meeting that same day, and then you start building it. I haven't been keeping track of the, all the running total in my head, but I'm guessing it's probably six. Three months, complete, a month for USDA, five to six, four to five months for design, that's nine. Um, two months for permitting, that's ten, eleven, um, thirty days for bid opening is twelve. Sixty to seventy days for closing is thirteen, fourteen. You're probably fifteen, sixteen months before you start construction, if I walked out of here with clear direction on what we wanted to accomplish. So if we wait, just keep, that's a best case scenario, I know hiccups, hiccups along the way, we're looking at probably sixteen months until construction starts. And you were advised in two thousand fourteen that your tower is in really bad condition.
So I just, some, I, I have a question, then Councilor Law and Councilor French, the, um. The, the role that you all are playing, is, is there a point where, so, so we're, you know, the manager provides the resolutions, and we're, we're paying for. The prep of the grant, does that, is that all the way to that, to the end of it, or is it, or is there a point at which the grant helps us to? Pay for, um, kind of these kinds of administrative?
Yeah, that, yeah, so that's a great question, so with, with USDA, there are some administrative costs that go with it, so for example. Um, when, I think when Jim approached me and we talked about USDA just for the tower painting. And I said, I highly recommend you don't do that, because the administrative fees will make it not worthwhile. Whether you are putting in one stick of water main or doing a tower. These three documents right here are all required, and this is about, uh, I mean, every single project. Just to get the application in is about a thirty thousand dollar undertaking, pretty close, I don't remember what it was here, I wanna say twenty. Okay.
Yeah.
So that's, that's very typical for either water or wastewater, thirty thousand dollars to get that submitted, do the engineering study, that's required. With USDA being a federal agency, and when you're dealing with rates now, you also have to have, um, you have to have bond counsel. Because even though the USDA is selling pre-sold bonds, you still have to have bond counsel to protect the city. You have to, there's, uh, work involved for the local attorney, and you also have to have a financial advisor. To advise on rates. Personally, a little frustrating one for me, because, uh, my profession has worked with estimating debt retirement for over a hundred years, and with the Dodd-Frank Act. Uh, engineers can no longer calculate debt retirement for municipal bonds, so, um. A good idea to have a, a, a financial rate consultant to come in, but it's a requirement for USDA, so. Usually we do, we have to do it in the report, and then ninety-five percent of the time, they reiterate what we recommend, and you cut them a check for fifteen thousand dollars.
Is, is, so is it out of pocket for the city, or is it?
So.
Can be rolled into the.
Great question, so I, I don't remember how we structured ours, I think we said we'd wait till we, either the city canceled the project, or, or suspended it, we wouldn't invoice for that, or until we submitted. So we're, we're, uh, plain bankers, which we're, it's not our, uh, profession, but we sometimes do that to, to help our clients, so. Um, if the city moves forward, then what you typically do, uh, depends on each other professional involved, between, um, attorneys, financial rate consultant, and engineers. We don't like to play financer, but we have done that, and then at the loan closing, um. Prior to the loan closing, there's the first set of bills that are typically approved with that, and shortly after the loan closing. The financial advisor, the bond counsel, sometimes local attorney, engineers are paid. The city gets reimbursed for costs, cause you're gonna have advertising and publication costs, like, there's a lot of, uh, public hearings and publications that go with this, so. You will have some out-of-pocket expenses that you can avoid, um, but after the loan closing, you can make your first draw, reimburse yourselves, and pay the other, uh, professionals. Who have been involved to get to that point, then after, once construction starts, there's a request every month. Um, we, we fill out a specific form that the USDA has, it comes to the city, uh, the bills get approved, it gets submitted electronically to USDA, they wire the money. Then you pay your vendors.
So Councilor Law or French Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor, um, I have a, um, a couple of questions, and I can ask one, and you can go around, and you can come back to me, however you wanna do it. But, um, my first question is, um. Is to, we have to decide today what we wanna do?
No, no. Oh, yeah, 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 that's fine.
Um, my second question is, when can we get, um, all three estimates? The, the one, two, and then the, the third estimate, when can we get that, like, on paper?
The one that Andy referenced?
Yeah.
It's kind of there in front of you right now, but I can, I can reformat it to show that better, um, it is essentially. If I'm understanding correctly, painting the existing for about five hundred and twelve, and then building the million gallon for two point eight. So that's about a three point three, I think is what Andy said, three point three five or three point four, something like that. Um, that'd be the capital cost, and then you could, uh, add up the, um, the fifty-year operational cost for the. Existing tower, seven hundred and eighty thousand for the million gallon would be nine seventy-five, those are in two thousand seventeen dollars, I should preface that as well. It's not accounted for inflation, it will certainly cost more than that, but that's in today's dollars, we don't know what inflation's gonna do. So that, that's kind of it, but I could, I could show that on a separate format if you, if you like.
Oh, yeah, please, and, um, another question that I have, um, you talked about, um, a loan. Will that, um, repayment of, of that loan come? Be paid back through, if we raise the, um, the water bill to the one point five percent, that will go back?
Yep.
Okay. And I think my last question is to the council, um, to the mayor. When is it possible that we, um, those of us that do want, um, input from the community, when can we? Um, start, you know, just letting them know what we possibly may be doing besides the discussion that we're having for tonight? For people that haven't been at the meeting, or are not watching it on TV, um. Me, myself, I would like to go out into the community and just talk about it, or give out some information about it, so that they are aware that. This may or may not be happening, uh, when is a good time for me to get all this information together? And pass it out to my precinct?
I, I, I think part of it is. So, right now, well, with, with adding in what, uh, Councilor French has, has mentioned, there's basically three options now, or possibilities. Okay, so we got, we, we could have three, four options.
Right.
I think we probably at least have to determine. If we did it, which one we wanted to go with, and then take that one and say. This is what we're thinking, I think we at least need to identify one, because what, what, what'll, what could happen is people get confused about.
Right.
You know, and it's all the city's building four water towers or something, you know.
So that's why I was asking, you know, when is a good time to um just present it out to?
I think once we.
To say, you know, your possibility, your water bill may go up, and this is what, why? And um just to, I don't know, just to get a connection with our um. Not to have them bicker at us, but just to keep them informed, you know, because it it will affect them if if the water bill goes up.
Absolutely. So I think I think basically just once we, once we determine. Which of the four we we would ideally want to do.
Okay.
Not necessarily committing to it, but just saying whichever one.
Okay, thank you.
You gonna?
I've spoken on this already.
He opened the door, concerning the garbage situation. This council sitting here had every authority and every right not to accept that bid. Our lawyer advised against it because he thought it would open litigation, but we definitely had the right and power to give the citizens a choice. Secondly, in and of itself, this grant will not sustain a new town, right? In and of itself, this grant, because this proposal is for forty-five percent of the money. And then the balance, the government is offering us two point five financing for the rest of it.
Two point seven five.
Okay, well, yeah, so my question, my statement in again is, this grant of itself will not sustain a water tower. It'll build it, but it won't sustain it.
No, correct, and that's and that's when you look on, if you look on that handout number one. We addressed some of the pros and cons at the bottom of it, but the having two half million gallon tanks is about three hundred thousand dollars less. The cap to to do the initial construction, but over a fifty year timeline, so you can borrow, let's say this was it right here. You could borrow the two and a half or the two point eight, and that builds it for you, so to your, okay, I got you now. Once that construction's closed out, it's a hundred percent, like anything, any other utility, it's a hundred percent or any other roadway. It's a hundred percent the city's to maintain. So that's why we want to show the fifty year projection, because that's important for you as policy and decision makers to know. It's always, and I, we like to discuss this with, you know, Jim or other operators, that we look at different materials, different material types, different scopes. What is the cost to operate and maintain it? Because yes, you can get the golden goose on day one, but if it costs you a fortune to maintain it, you lost. And so that's why we want to show down here the importance of, okay, one of them is, you know, two towers is one point four million. And why is that? Because it's a lot of painting, there's more to paint. Whereas the one million gallon tank with the composite is concrete, don't have to paint the concrete, you paint the steel at the top. It's uh just under a million dollars to paint that or maintain that for fifty years. But that's that middle or that third table, that all's a hundred percent yours.
Okay, you 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 put that out there pretty good, thank you. Therefore, our water rates must go up, even though we're forty-four, Alvin is one of the lowest in the nation per capita with our water rates. But the water rates must rise, and that will be up to us to pass that on to the citizens, either through a vote of council. Or taking it to the voters through some type of mileage. And in Alvin right now, um I'm all for the the tower. Having uh being brought brand new because it's overdue. We're bringing a safety issue to them, however, marketing to them is my only concern. Because this city has been overburdened with bonds, and it's our senior citizens who are carrying the burden. Because the our homeowners in Alvin are our senior citizens, they pay sixty percent of the taxes that's coming into the town. It's going to be a hard sale, if the council decides whatever, I just wanted to put that out there for the public, thank you.
Yep, I I agree, that's a that's a challenge in every community, it there's no question, so it's not isolated here, I can tell you that, so.
Council, councilman French.
So the fourth proposal addresses a couple of comments you've made earlier, Mickey. And you'd commented earlier that we've got an awful lot of fund balance, almost surplus fund balance. That doesn't help us in terms of maximizing what we could get from from grants. So perhaps one option is, is that in fact, we 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 spend a half a million dollars off our fund balance and paint the water tower. And that the new project is a standalone, one million dollar, one million gallon tank in four twenty-nine project, whatever that costs. And then we can add the.
Water main.
Water mains on top of it. And so the the painting is, again, as I said before, it's the stopgap that gets us there for the next two years. Because we're going to have to paint it in the next two years, we're not going to get a new water tower in two years. Uh unless, you know, processes happen, you know, light and fast. So that gives us that that stopgap measure, we have the fund balance, so we can cover it. We don't have to increase rates immediately, and so maybe over those two years, we could step the rate increase. So that by the time building starts, it's not like, here, we're going to increase our rates forty percent. And so it's a stepwise, and then we're able to talk about why we're building a million gallon water tank on these sides. I can spend some time looking into our citizens' needs. And then we solve the problem of of the twenty year delay or five year delay in painting the water.
We, you know, on that point, you know, one thing I didn't mention earlier, that's a, that is definitely an option. And I can give an example that we just went through in Cassopolis. And we submitted, and the USDA will look at your most recent audits. So there's no hiding your fund balance, I mean, not not that anybody would, but I mean, it's going to be right there, they're going to look at the last three years of audits. And they'll see what the fund balance is. In Cassopolis, they said, hey, your fund balance is too high, you you aren't going to qualify for grant. We were able to show them, they had lift stations break down, one, as soon as one got done, another one broke down, and we ended up doing a. We're doing a seven lift station project, repair project for them right now through USDA. But um we were able to show the USDA, hey, look, we've got a signed contract for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the construction company. Repair lift station number two, or number one, in that case it was. And so, yeah, we've got six hundred thousand fund balance, but two fifty of that's going to be gone in the next three months. And they said, okay, now your fund balance is, for their size of a system, the three fifty was deemed low enough. And then they were then eligible for the um for the grant dollars, to your point. The one concern I didn't mention earlier about having too much storage, if you have too much storage capacity in your elevated towers. You don't get that movement in the water. And I wouldn't be as concerned about anything with the water quality. Little prolonged periods of time can contribute to that, but we have some pretty brutal winters here in Michigan. And the less your tower, because your tower is throughout the day, it's filling and it's lowering, it's filling and lowering. It's a certain level, pumps come on, it fills up, it's then the pumps turn off, and it's doing that, if you get too much storage, it doesn't cycle very often. And it can make it more susceptible to freezing. So we do not want to have too much, you can have too much storage for water.
That is controllable, you don't have to fill the tank a million full.
No, but you got to have your set points, and so if.
Sure, but that's all, but that's all controllable, it's not, you know, you can use controls to monitor that.
You can, this can be your tank, and you can say pumps turn on when it comes here, and turn off when it gets here.
Right.
And what you're saying is to keep it moving, let's turn on here and turn off here, and turn on here and turn off here. What happens? All of this is never moving, this this is more susceptible to freezing.
I was going to say.
Did you follow me?
Yeah, what I was going to say is you don't, you don't start midway, you start down at the bottom, because if it was a half a million gallon tank, and you only fill it to a half a million. And you do that rotation back and forth, and then you build capacity in that top of that storage tank as you need it, or until we take the first one off.
Yeah, we normally want to.
Oh, I know what you want to do, I'm just saying, for winter, for winter, there are controls.
Yeah, I'm going to say we typically don't go below thirty percent, just because of fire protection.
Oh, no, I understand that, but if you went from say thirty to fifty or thirty to sixty-five percent, you could still get the movement, we're talking engineering.
Yeah, yeah.
So um. Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Bitner, one of the questions I have is in terms of the timing of a rate increase. Should council make a determination on which project they want to explore? At what point would that go and need to go into effect?
Great question, sorry, I didn't touch on that earlier. That would not need to take effect until just prior to the loan closing. The bond counsel would provide your rate ordinance after bids are received typically. It would all be drafted, and they'd be filling in numbers, and you would, they would provide that ordinance. And at the at the loan closing, the bond counsel typically runs that meeting. And they're check with USDA, and they are checking boxes, let's see your rate ordinance. And usually they want to see it beforehand, we, as soon as it passes, it gets signed by the clerk and scanned in, but that's probably. Well, the case I had, it was about two weeks before the closing, that's pretty tight, usually it's probably six to eight weeks before the closing. So after we know what our bids are, so that could be in my example, I think probably twelve or quite fourteen months down the road, something like that. So that's not in the imminent future, but it would be down the road if the council moves forward.
So one one question I had, so. Make sure I'm clear about this, so the USDA is expecting the loan be paid back through the water rates.
Yep.
So there's no other way, so if if, because, you know, for example, recently, we had. That's what a special allocation from the state to help with a water project. So let's say something, you know, we we receive some money to help. There's no way to really throw that into the process. Other than doing, you know, maybe, you know, paying for like like sort of what council member French was saying, we we just cover the water tower. But then it defeats what you're saying, which is you might as well max out, you know, the grand.
For the grant, yeah, I mean, if you came into some windfall in the future, you can you can prepay your loan off. USDA does allow that.
Okay.
You can prepay. I'm not aware of anybody who's been able to lower their rates, but I know of communities who did not raise them for many years. Because they things, they had some big industrial development or something that really made a contribution in the water sewer rates. And general property taxes, more for the water and sewer in this case. In the case of Cassopolis that I just gave. They did not need, because in that quarter, the interest rate dropped to one point eight seven five percent. What does that mean? That means their dollar can buy a lot more. They were not requi, their rates were high enough, they did not need any increase. Their rates were already in that one and a half percent, close to that, they were planning on raising their rates to pay back the debt. They did not have to raise rates. Because the interest rate was so low at their dollar, in our in our report, we planned on two point seven five percent. That's what it was when we started the process, and it was two or three quarters later, or it was two and a half percent. The rates kept, went down to two and a eighth, and then that next quarter went to one and seven eighths. So because the rate was so low, in the report, we were meeting the one and a half percent. But because the interest rate dropped, they probably only had to go to one point three or something. So um don't bank on that, that doesn't happen very often, but that was a, that was just a stars aligned on that. It was a a great deal, so that, on that note, their council did, because they recognized the need for capital improvements, they did raise their rates. They did not need to, but they said, if we're doing this project, this is a great time to. It make, it's logical to increase our rates at this time, and so they made a slight adjustment at that time, but.
Are there any other?
One other comment, so on your point, so you asked about when to tell people about it, and I I guess I don't think there's ever a bad time to talk to people about it. Just as long as it's conveyed that it's very preliminary and there's, you know, what you want, I know what you're getting at. You want to stop the rumor mill before it gets going, and that's, I think that's helpful, we all try to do that when we can. I think when a scope is identified, that would be a good time. You can tell people are exploring options with the water system, you can say that water towers is in significant disrepair. We were told in two thousand fourteen that needs to be painted, we've been told for fifteen, twenty years that we need to have a million gallons of storage by the DEQ. That's not a secret, that's all, that's been out there for for years. We haven't done any major water main projects for probably twenty years or more, we dealt, did a water plant and some transmission main in two thousand one. We haven't done much since then, we're trying to be more proactive and as custodians of your infrastructure neighbors. I think those conversations are good all the time.
I guess one more thing, Mickey, could you also just go into a little bit more detail? Because when I hear you saying painting, if I were in the audience, I might think we're just talking about the cosmetic exterior. But this is actually some interior work as well.
I had a feeling somebody was going to ask that question, so. I didn't come prepared on that, so um that's a great question, because I was in a community about ten years ago. And and one of the commissioners said, we should be able to find someone in the city who would volunteer to paint the tower for us. And uh there was a lot more, a lot louder laughs than what I just heard there. But everybody recognized that was um not a reality, just the liability and the equipment that's needed for that. But there is, there's two components on the tank, so there's interior painting and exterior painting. And the interior is what protects the steel from oxidation or rust, and then over time, that just wears out like anything else. You're painting that, um let's see, if you look on the the water tower handout I gave. That's usually about every twenty years, you can look at year twenty, and it says repaint wet interior. And then again, at year forty, repaint wet interior, so about every twenty years, you're repainting the inside of the tower. That requires draining the tower, drying it out, sand blasting to take away the rust, doing touch up welding. And then painting a primer and a coat or maybe two coats on the inside of the of the of the tank. Those are things that we don't see on a regular basis. The exterior we do see, and we can see some spots of rust developing, the paint starts to wear. It may look great from a distance, but when they do the tank inspection, and again, this was Dixon Engineering, it's primarily what they do. They're up close, looking at it very closely, and they can find the blemishes and the scars on the tower. And so same thing, they they do spot sand blasting on the exterior, and they also have to repaint that to seal that up to give it additional life. And then when they do that, when they do their inspections, they're also looking at safety apparatus and accessibility up on the top. They're looking for other things as well, so they do, they did a very comprehensive report for the city. I didn't get too detailed there, Cheryl, did that answer okay, so? But it's not what you go buy at Home Depot or anything, I mean, this is, it's an industrial grade paint, and they have very specific safety equipment. And it's, if you ever watch them, it's quite an operation, so.
Just out of curiosity, is there a reason why, I guess excluding the the third option there, that they take that kind of the shape? The water towers take that shape?
Which one?
Or just the the one we have, or the, if we did the second one, they have that?
Well, it's just the the bowl shaped is, it helps gravity work and it drains to the bottom. So it allows, you know, if you did a square, you end up with um some level spots, you know, it's kind of like your garage or driveway or basement floor. Where you get standing water all the time, and it doesn't cycle, and you can have more prone to bacteria buildup or where things don't move. So you have that bowl shaped, and it fills up, and then it comes down, and everything's always moving toward the drain and filling back up, so.
And then in the uh the concrete, the composite one, what, so obviously that's pretty large space in it, what what's what's in there?
That's a great question, a lot of communities, a lot of great questions here. So a lot of communities have taken those and put a garage door at the base of them, and used them to store plow trucks or other DPW equipment. I think I've even heard of places that have made office spaces in them, in the base of them. So now you get above ten feet, I don't know of anybody that has a second floor on theirs, but I suppose you certainly could for storage. But I know of communities that put a garage door, and they store a truck in there, a public works truck. And the larger these get, I mean, the base gets a little bit larger, you could probably put a couple of trucks in there. And the larger these get, I mean, the base gets a little bit larger, you could probably put a couple trucks in there, so, um, so there are, it's a great way to take advantage of more space that you have without a big cost.
Thank you. Do, are there any other, uh, questions?
Thanks, Mickey.
If there are quite, any more questions, I would just ask either get those to Cheryl or Jim and, um, please be in touch and I'll try to respond the best I can as rapidly as I can. Um, leaving here, I, I will start working with Tom to try and crunch numbers on the, doing the, kind of the rate analysis portion of it to find out where we stand with that and what I kinda project, I won't be able to finalize that, but I can probably get a rough idea on the amount of debt that could be, um, afforded by the city based on adjusting the rates. So that'll take a little bit of time, but I'll get with that and I'll forward that information for, um, Cheryl to disseminate as soon as I have that available.
Thank you.
No. Nope, I, there will be, uh, I'll exchange emails and phone calls with Tom and I'll probably have to come sit with him at some point, or someone from our office will and go through and just find out, this doesn't make sense, we have to dig deeper and it's, it's always, it is, the rate part is the hardest part of, one of the hardest parts of this because there's just always, you know, we do the math, how many customers you should get, um, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars of revenue a year, and you're showing on your, on your, um, P and L that you're getting one point two million. Okay, well the math, or it's vice versa. And we gotta figure out why, we have to get those relative, probably within a couple percent for USDA to accept them. They'll allow a little bit of numbers not matching up, but we, USDA and the city should want those to match up as well. So if there's money you're not collecting, you wanna be collecting those.
Thanks. Thank you. Is there any, uh, public comment this evening?
I do have one question.
If you, if you could come up and, uh, state your name and address?
Get my mess out of your way here. The name is Ed Tryne, seven oh nine Division Street. They, uh, there's a statement saying something about a two hundred and forty dollars a year for a water bill? Does that include the basic rate? Which is a hundred and ninety-two dollars? Twenty-four dollars, or forty-eight dollars a quarter? For the basic rate?
Twenty-four for water.
Twenty-four for sewer.
Per quarter.
Yeah. And that's just to have the water turned on?
Yeah, so times four, that is ninety-six dollars a year for water.
No, that's each.
Yeah, but we're only talking about water.
Right.
We're not talking about sewer. Not sewer.
So each per, per? But in order to, uh, have water, you gotta pay the sewer bill, don't you?
Yeah, but this is a project for the water side, not the sewer side.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, your bill is quarterly, that ready to serve is twenty-four dollars per quarter, which is ninety-six dollars per year, just for water. And there's another ninety-six for sewer. That's the ready to serve, um, then you have your commodity.
How much is the water?
Your usage on top of that, so you pay twenty-four dollars a, a quarter, whether you use it or not. And then if you use a thousand gallons, you pay for a thousand gallons on top of that. If you use fifty thousand gallons, you're paying for fifty thousand gallons on top of that, so, that part, you're right, so you're paying ninety-six, uh, one ninety-two a year for water and sewer, whether, whether you use it or not. Yep.
So the two forty is when it's being used?
Yeah, that includes the water use, that, that the statistics say.
That's just for water. So, yeah, I've not been talking about sewer, so let's say you wanted to pursue this for both the water, and all your wastewater plant has some needs and your wastewater collection system. If you wanted to pursue both, you'd be looking at raising the sewer to the same amount. The USDA has two separate pots of money, you're eligible to use both of them, but you can only, um, they look at each utility, completely, uh, draw a line in between them, they are their own animal, each one is, so, if you wanted to pursue this for the wastewater plant or for wastewater improvements, lift stations, collection system, um, that would be analyzed on an independent basis as well. And you could take most of what I just said and just ditto it for, for wastewater.
Yeah.
It would be in that same animal.
Let's not.
No, but, but when you do though, one night, we've, a couple of times we've had communities, we've had communities do both before, and then the environmental report can cover both of them, that will stand for both. It still requires its own engineering report separately, but, um, anyway, but those are, they are independent and separate.
Uh, seeing no, thank you. Seeing no further, uh, public comment will move forward, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Joe, what's the percentage differential to optimize the water power?
So you, you actually wanna create your water tower again?
We are actually forty-three.
No, of course not, you're only eighty, eighty percent, they change it once.
Yeah, it's about probably forty percent.
Right, right. But I'm just thinking from an engineering solution, you know?
Uh, they do have, in the winter, they do have, put in like a circulator.
Yeah. But I'm just thinking in terms of sort of,
Alright.
New option for, which is we would spend a lot of, you know, just water.
And I think it's a good idea.
We were talking about that.
Huge.
Yep. And we just, so if we, if we did that, and then we ended up right over the passages or something, is there a downside from going one half of the milli, where you're cycling it from, you know, every nine, two times?
What we do, we have some, you know, make sure.
Right, so I mean, right, 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 and so you may not actually fill the million, well, actually, it probably won't be, cause it's higher off the ramp.
Well, no, it would be, the top of the tanks, it would be, that's what they choose about. So when the pumps turn on, they both fail. It's a lot higher. It would be a shorter tower. It would be a shorter tower, it would, it would maintain the same pressure in the whole system.
Right, I get that.
You're ready for your water levels to be at percent.
Right, yeah, yeah, that keeps, right, I get that. But I'm just thinking, if you're seventy dollars a gallon, it is fifty. But differential height, and you've got a ten.
Is your day really, really busy tomorrow?
That's the diameter.
Oh, that's another.
My days are really, really busy.
How tall was I?
I'm talking, I, I'm talking, I got president now, really, really.